So, so two years in, tell us, what do you know now that you didn't know then? Or what's, uh, what's, what's better and what's worse about this job?
Um, well, I, I, to be honest, I always kind of had an idea of the, the amount of time commitment. I didn't realize the actual amount of time commitment. Which is, which is okay. My husband and I were lucky, we, well, I wouldn't say we're lucky. We don't have children. And so, I can commit a lot more time to this than what I believe other folks are able to. It, it's a big time commitment. I will be honest. On the light weeks, ten to fifteen hours. On the heavy, heavy weeks, when we have council prep and all that reading and making sure you have a good understanding of everything and sending in all the emails, you know, and council meeting, you're pushing twenty some hours. So, twenty to thirty, and then when, of course, we have budget season, that's like sixty hours. So, your whole week, so you, so I, I am lucky and fortunate enough to have the time to do this. And that's one thing that I, and I, and when I do anything, I give it full commitment. So, and I think that's where some of my folks that have got, tried to get involved with council, I was like, I don't know if you have the time for this. And, and I've flat out told them, it's like, this is how much time I put in it. You know, because the citizens expect you to call them back. They expect you to reply to their emails. My kind of, the, I've always been a person who, like, I like having these types of meetings. And I'm fine with it being recorded, I have no problem with that. I get more out of talking to a person on their porch with their problem. So that means, if I get off work at three thirty in the afternoon, they call me at one thirty, I can talk to them for a few minutes and say, well, I'm done at three thirty, I could be at your house by four o'clock. Let's talk about it. And that, that goes a long ways. Citizens seem to like it, my neighbors seem to prefer that. Oh, you actually came and talked to me. You saw the issue, because when you're talking about, I've got a problem with my street. I've got a problem with snow. I've got a problem with all this neighbor's garbage. Pictures say a lot, but seeing it in person, captured, really see, really shows the dire need or the straits that some of our folks are dealing with and some of the issues. And I hope those folks remember to say nice things to their neighbors and say, he came and talked to me.
Are those the kinds of things that you often get, get calls on?
Yeah, those are the, the things, the main things, like my landlord, mainly rental issues with the neighbors, where their neighbors just don't pick up their garbage, or they leave trash everywhere, snow. There's certain neighbors who just don't like the way that the city does the snow removal. I don't get why they're blocking my driveway. Well, that's, we've been doing it for fifty years, so you've been living there for forty of those fifty years. So, um, you know the drill. Don't try to pull the wool over the new guy's eyes. So, and, and I'd say that back to them. But some, some incidences are worse than others. You know, it's like, okay, why are you, why is this happening? And sometimes it's, it's issues flat out where people just don't understand their new neighbors. They just are, the neighborhood is, it's been going through some changes and it's been okay. And as a person who's been living there for twelve plus years, I've seen a lot of them. And there are people who aren't happy with some of those changes and, and sorry, you just have to, these are your, now your neighbors. And this is the circumstances of what happens when we no longer have permanent residents, where we have, uh, well, where their house, where their neighbor may have lived there for thirty years and then they passed away, and Bob's house went up for sale and now it's a rental. And there are constant, there are, and that's not to say it's a good or a bad thing, it's just, they're not happy with their neighbors.
So more rentals?
Yeah, more rentals. And we, but we need more rentals, but we also need quality rentals. I've seen, set foot in some of those houses that I thought were quality on the outside, but they really weren't once you got on the inside. And it's, it's discouraging and it's frustrating and it's just, oh gosh. And so sometimes there's issues where I talk to the renters and say, hey, let's, you know, they're having issues with their landlord not helping them with their property, with the taking, keeping, upkeeping the property.
So are there, are there any issues that, that have come up in the two years you've been on that maybe were, were more controversial than you anticipated? Or maybe looked different from sitting at the council table than you, than you would have realized coming in?
Well, of course, going in was the dogs and parks. That was a big thing. And that was, that was probably one of the biggest things. And then, of course, mask, mask mandate, that was huge. There was a lot of unhappy folks with that. There was a lot of very unhappy folks with that for a very long time. And there's still some folks that are upset about it, that randomly send emails about mask mandates and vaccine passports and, and it's a, and it, I'll be honest, it's, it's a copy paste email that some group is telling them to email out. And I usually respond back to the folks saying, well, we can't do this because the state has changed our, our, the laws against us. We can't, we can't push those mandates again.
So people emailing you saying they want it back?
No, they want it, they still don't want us to put one up ever again. There was, there has been, that's mainly since, since it's been, since we rescinded it, so. That was probably one of the biggest ones. And then, then there's been folks outside the ward who have had issues with other property owners. There's been issues with that, but nothing like, nothing that is like, oh, this is, nothing that can't be resolved without having a good, with having a good conversation and providing the adequate information.
And did you, did you have to think twice about running for reelection? Or were you all in, ready to go?
I was pretty, I, I thought about it for a little while. And then I just realized, you know, I really want to do this again. There's, there's a lot more things that I want to see finished. The, the vision that I see our city going, we can really keep going farther. We can really do a lot more. After talking to a lot of citizens and learning over the years of what happened once, once the seventies and eighties rolled in, where we lost nearly nine to ten thousand people. And when you really start looking around, you start noticing it and you're like, oh, this is why it seems to be my generation in particular, I'd say between, and I'm thirty seven, folks between thirty five and forty five, maybe forty seven, fifty-ish, we seem to be missing those folks. And I can never figure out why, and I, and it did, and it, and after a while, it dawned on me, a lot of those people just left. And I started making connections through Facebook groups of like, oh, I used to live in Dubuque, but I moved away. And there, unfortunately, your guys' age pointing towards YouTube, because that's the age demographic that, that you would have left when you were my age or younger, or your parents left town, and you just never came back.
A lot of my classmates left and never came back.
Exactly, and, and they just left. And so we, we lost all that potential for, for development, potential for growth and change and stuff. And so I really want to see, not, well, it'd be great if you came back, as you're retiring or such, but attracting younger people to stay in our community. We have so many kids going through Loris, Clark, UD, NICC, well, most NICC kids are local, but like Warburg and even Divine, Divine Word out there in Eppworth, where if we could get a fraction of those kids to stay every year, and I think it's possible.
So, can you talk about that a little bit, Danny? I mean, you, you mentioned that there's a lot of things you'd like to see finished, you'd think we can go farther, and you'd like to see us attract, uh, we'll keep college students here and attract some people back. How would that manifest itself, or would that look like, or what would be some examples?
So, well, we need definitely more, more kind of jobs that are kind of pushing up the, the income bracket. The pandemic has kind of forced that hand to happen with manufacturing, office. It's very interesting to notice that all of a sudden we went from jobs where people weren't paying barely over fifteen and now they're at pushing twenty. It, it's very interesting, this just happened like literally in three to four months. And so, that's, that's really good. If we can get those folks working in those industries, it would be awesome. But we need to get fiber expanded more in our city. And that's kind of a long push, but it's, it needs to happen. And in do, if we could get fiber, we could get folks to look at Dubuque as a city of choice, where I don't live it, I don't live in Dubuque anymore, or I don't, I don't need, I can telecommute. We could literally, if last year taught us anything, do we really need to be working in our offices twenty-four seven? I've got a friend who lives in town who actually was able to just get qualified and finally get his paperwork through to work in the state of Washington, for the state of Washington, but he doesn't have to move to Washington. That's what's happening and, and we're not really figuring out, and I'm trying to be like, I need to like somehow put up a billboard somewhere and to attract people to like, this could be a destination of choice, a city of choice, where we've got quality schools, we have decent cost of living, where we, where we're trying to be the big town, the big city experience, but, but not really be the big city experience, so to speak.
So if there were expanded fiber, I mean, are you thinking that to help the workers? Or do you think that there would be more businesses would be attracted to that?
In general, because we could, if you could, the North End, for example, and, and I'm going to plug this the worst because it's the last part of the city that's getting fiber. We're just, we've got old infrastructure that needs to get updated faster than what, than like seven and ten years. If we could get that fiber in in three years or less, working from home would be a dream for people. We, you've got older homes that are low, that, that sell relatively cheap and economical. So you could get younger people to move into the community, to buy and work on them without having to possibly, you know, spend a fortune on cars and such. Yeah, they're probably still going to have two cars. But it's, it could be a city of choice. And I think it's, it's really doable by marketing ourselves better and showing that, here's all these wonderful events, festivals, organizations you can become a part of. And you're seeing it out west a lot, where people are fleeing the West. But they're, they're fleeing mainly, they're fleeing California because it's just too expensive to live there. But maybe they want to come back to Iowa. Maybe they don't want to come back to Iowa. Maybe they don't want to live in Chicago anymore, or Madison, or Milwaukee. But we could make Dubuque very similar to that.
So with, with emphasis on something like fiber, I mean, what can, what can Danny Sprank as a city council member do to make that happen? I mean, it's nice to have that vision.
Yeah, so, well, we're working pretty good with, with Iman on getting this happening. But if, if they were to come to the council asking for funding and we could figure out a way to make it happen, I would be all for supporting finding funding for this because it has to happen. As, I work in the North End as well. I have the worst internet availability at my company, at my employer. And there's nothing we can do about it. It's just, it is horrific. Like, I cannot do, I, I have to go home to my own house to go rather than to use the, the works internet if I wanted to do like a Zoom meeting. Just because for some reason on that, like three blocks, the wires are just terrible. Like, you cannot get any better data.
Remind me where you work?
So my, my employer is Geezy Roofing Company.
Okay.
Where I'm a project manager and estimator. Going on fifteen years, actually, yeah, about fifteen years the other day.
And you grew up in this area, but not in Dubuque?
Yes, yes, I grew up on my folk, yeah, Folks' Farm just south of Bellevue.
Okay, and have you, how long have you lived in Dubuque then?
Uh, about fifteen-ish years.
Okay, since that, okay. And, and talk a little bit about some of the hot button issues and that have come before council, like Five Flags.
Yeah, and I look at Five Flags as, here you've got this almost an albatross of a building. It, it's either do something with it, or don't do something with it. And unfortunate, and our citizens will decide in the end. I, my prediction is that the first refer, it'll go to referendum once, fail. And then maybe a second time it'll pass after major cuts. That's just my prediction, so. Something has to happen with the facility. I don't want to lose it, it's, it's a good amenity.
What, what would you encourage people to do? Do you think it could make it as, I mean, you think that big ticket project is worth it? Or would you like a scaled back version?
I think a scaled back version is what will probably really end up being the final, the final, the final kind of product, shall we say. The business model makes sense to me. Where you've got, here you've got, like, once again, Dubuque is, is the center of a hub. And with our location of being an hour and a half away, or maybe two hours or three hours for some people, they want to come from maybe, Kansas City's a little farther, six hours even, that'd be a haul. But making it a destination where it's an event, you come to Dubuque, you have, you see a show, you stay in town for the night and you have a really nice time here. My husband's older, has some older cousins that are about fifty or fifty-two. They had never been to Dubuque before and they're from Lansing, Lansing, Illinois, so not too far from here. Their, their daughter in college was supposed to go to a volleyball tournament at UD, or sorry, no, at Loris, and it didn't happen. So they still came anyways. And we gave them a lovely tour of the town. They really enjoyed the farmer's market, they really enjoyed our bee ranch, the bee ranch, the mines of Spain. They had a great time down at the River Museum, because they like water and river. And so they just, they really enjoyed coming to Dubuque. They were, did not realize how hilly it was. So, it's, it's, it's a charm, it's a, we have a charming little city and it's just trying to showcase it to people. Trying to be like, come see our city, you might like it.
And what about downtown parking?
Parking, yes. Yes, 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 I was assuming that would be a fun, lovely question. Well, I wouldn't, I, I'd like to say that the ink is fairly dry on that deal. But I think that they're both looking at, that the two players, Cunningham and Butler and Heartland, they're willing to look at the possibility like, well, maybe we don't need such a big parking ramp. Maybe they need a smaller parking ramp. But I also look at parking ramps as a utilitarian kind of structure. They're, if you don't need them at some point, tear them down. Unlike it, do you want across the street? That's not, that one's not in the best shape and neither's the one down by, because it's the Iowa Street one is, is much better. We can all of a sudden tear them down and not have a place for all these folks to park when they are using them. But maybe we don't need them as much to the degree. And I, and it's a very tough thing to realize, oh, all of a sudden you tear it down and you really needed it. So I, I think it would take a bigger in-depth discussion with a lot of our area businesses to be, to really talk about, what's your five-year plan? And, and if they kind of say, we need this, well, they're the ones that are parking in it quite a bit, to some extent. And if they say, eh, maybe not. And COVID really threw a monkey wrench in everything. I, it is very interesting to see where, it'll be very interesting to see in five years, where, what our downtown even shape looks like. People may not need, they may all be working from home forever. I don't know, I hope not. It's very, it'll be very interesting to see, so.
But prior to COVID, I mean, I, you know, that deal and obviously a huge component with the Rocheck building, but I mean, that, the parking ramp component of that, I mean, there were people howling about that when it was first under consideration, pre-COVID. I mean, do you think that, you know, enough research and due diligence was done there to, to approve that component? Or was that, I mean, were we still focused on kind of Rocheck and getting those two companies on board? That, you know, I, I, we write, I don't know, once a year, once every year and a half about occupancy rates and parking ramps. And I've been doing that since before COVID. And the rates were never super high. It just kind of feels like, I guess I'm, I'm just kind of curious what your thought was on approving it in the first place.
At the time, when, I think that was the second meeting when I came out to council? Literally, so I think I had a couple of weeks' worth of information about it. We were being told, they were intending to cram that building full, all eight floors of like, and hire another like hundred some people. So, I think of, okay, so where's those folks going to park? I also think like, and I know with the Paco was coming in there hard and heavy. There's, you know, there's another example of a building that they're using it, but they're not fully using it yet because they just haven't got their full capacity. They haven't seemed to have got their wind back in their sails, shall we say. They're going to need that. I think one thing that I, that I want to look at in big, long term is, and I don't even know if, if this is possible, is looking at using the parking ramps on the weekends more in front, for free parking, if that's even possible. Because that may, because when you really look at it, is if all of a sudden the Millwork District gets rehabbed and you, like, I don't know what that building is, that seven-story beast right along the highway that sits empty?
Yep.
Theoretically, say.
Across from Smokestack.
Yes, yes. Just say hypothetically that gets turned into apartments, seven floors, maybe five hundred people? Maybe, where the hell are we going to park all those people all of a sudden? Maybe, then that might be pushing it, maybe three hundred people, I don't know. I don't know how many apartments you put in one, but it's a big building. Where would we theoretically put three hundred people? That, that is the trend, so. I kind of like the idea of having the, the ramp available for when we need it for the future developments, so. And if our old ones can't be saved, then we look at demolishing them and doing something. And maybe those lot, then they're just a parking lot.
I don't know, I've got a list of potential topics, I don't know.
Go ahead.
In your mind. So, uh, I'm just going to throw some out there and I'll, I'm going to maybe let you guys tell me which ones you think are bigger wins than others. One would be community finances and debt serves. Another one might be just, um, fire and safety services and so on.
Yeah, let's start there, that's.
Okay.
Yeah, so, for example, we do have budgeted and planned to expand, to look at investing in that other, that additional fire station on the other side of town, on the West End. The city's kind of going in that direction, so we're, where you should probably look at continuing to have adequate fire prevention, adequate fire safety or adequate fire response, whichever the proper wording is, to, to help our citizens out that way. Like, for example, I asked the question, when, when we were looking at adding that stairwell on Fire Station Six, that's a very small fire station, it's just like, I think it's like a truck, that's it. And, well, is this really the proper investment? I mean, is this, is it important to keep that station up and running? Maybe we should talk about taking that one down and then we could just use the support of the other one. And it really comes down to, from my basic understanding of location, 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 like you want to have the spire house covered so much, so we can have that awesome phenomenal response. I have had to, three times in my life, where I've had my, the rental house next to me catch on fire twice to find out how fast the fire station get, the fire department gets there. As well as I was a first responder at emergent, where, where my boss decided to have a heart attack at his desk. And so I've had to do that. And it's a long five minutes to wait for the fire department to get there to help you when you're doing all that stuff. So, I, I think we have great phenomenal response. Staffing is an issue and it's, we've got, we know we've got a demographic of firefighters that are approaching retirement age. It's just, that's what it is. And we have to get more, got more firefighters involved regardless, whether it's additional recruitment. I think the fact that we changed a policy allowing the firefighter, you didn't, not all city staff have to live within the city staff, they're within the city limits, that they can move out farther is nice. I know when I chatted with our fire department two years ago about that idea, I said, I, I have no problem with that. I just don't want to see what, what happens in the Chicago suburbs, where you've got firefighters that work in multiple fire departments, because they can just overlap. Nobody asks these questions that all of a sudden they're diff, they're working for two different fire departments when they're on their days off. And that is quite common in the suburbs of the Chicagoland area, where it's like, you work for how many fire departments? And at least we can't do that in the Dubuque area, so that's one lesson.
When you talk about, you know, the, the positive response time, do you look at stats compared to other cities and like compare? I know that there are some areas of our city where the response time is significantly longer than others, obviously. But some people say it's too long, I don't, I just don't know. I mean, theoretically, you know, if, if it's, if they're, how they hold up compared to, to some of the other communities?
It is, it is. So, and, and our geography screws us over. You know, you can get around the Quad Cities a lot faster, you can get around Cedar Rapids a lot faster than Dubuque. We know we're an old town, we've got hills and things that it's like, we parked that car there, why did we decide to put a street there? And it shows. And so that's where, and I'm not sure, like, I, I did have a gentleman call me, there was a third ambulance when we had COVID. And then that's, it's back and running, but we shut it down for a couple of weeks just because of staffing issues. But it's up and running. And that was important to have that third ambulance for response times. I guess I'd have to find, so back to your question, there was some information provided in a report, which I think included Davenport and Cedar Rapids, kind of a comparison.
And Bob's question about the city finances is, I'm curious what, you know, I guess your take on city spending and whether or not that's an issue that you hear about from your constituents?
From time to time I do. There's always, it's usually big ticket things. It's always big ticket things, because it's always, but when you try to talk about like, say, oh, let's take out like a fire truck, a one-point-two-million-dollar fire truck out of the entire budget, it doesn't really change the budget percentage that much at the very end of the, of the day. We've got old things that need to get replaced. Our house has got some old infrastructure, shall we say, and I live in an old house, so I understand this. I don't like replacing wiring, but you have to do it. It's just, if you want to bring things up to code and up to par, we have to replace the things, our equipment, our infrastructure. So usually it's big ticket items. And I think a lot of people also, when I, when they do talk to me, I also explain to them, well, like Comiskey Park, which has been going on and on for a while, half of that funding is coming from the federal government, so it's a grant. Yes, it's, it's kind of a gift, but there are, you know, we have to pay for the other half of it. And folks get kind of lost in the weeds because of the complexity. I actually, I feel like financially we're in a very solid state. Moody's has always been giving us a good bond rating and they actually said our bond rating was even better. And the complexity of borrowing, once you really take the time and ask somebody and take a half an hour and really research it and have a really long conversation, because it makes, it makes sense. We need the, if, when we're bidding these jobs and we're wanting to borrow against ourselves, having this higher bond rating is very helpful. People get, I think citizens think that it's almost like your own personal checkbook and it, and it isn't. It is their money. And that's important, but it also isn't like we're just robbing people blindly and we're just, oh, we're just buying everything and anything because we just need to replace it, or we just need to do this. So it's very hard for people to understand the immense complexity of, of, of our finances. And I, and when people talk to me, like, oh, I need to talk to you for two minutes and explain. And if, and if you're not going to give me two minutes of your time, then, then I can't answer your question, so. I guess, does that kind of make sense?
Yeah.
That's how complicated it is. Like, I had a half an hour chat with our, I got randomly called up by the auditors, the financial auditors. They had said, Dubuque's one of those unique towns, you don't always see where you've got so many different levels of financing all in one, with like, like housing and HUD and lead paint stuff. I said, yeah, I've, I've heard that. And, and with my job, I'm able to talk to other cities, because I do work on their buildings. And sometimes I'll just ask them, be like, hey, have you ever thought of using this program? Or, oh, we never thought of that, you know? And it's amazing, the number of programs, like if you compare us, even though we're not, we're about three times the size of Clinton? Of how they're just trying to play catch up with what's happened into their city. Of how they're just trying to play catch-up with what's happened into their city, with all their abandoned properties, with all the bad things that have happened, of how they're.
Did you say Clinton?
Clinton, yeah. How they're, they're playing catch-up, just, just to try to figure out how to do things. How like, I know you guys don't always cover like Bellevue, for example, but how Jackson County's trying to do a lot of the things that we're doing. And it, it's very interesting to see that, that the people want to do more with their cities. And they just, they just don't get the programs, or they don't understand the programs.
You know, just a few years ago, it seems like we talked so much about the Central Corridor and the, the, the True North, and the North Ends Day is coming. How do you think that's, you know, turned out and?
Didn't turn out as much as I liked.
Are people in your, in your ward bummed about that?
Kind of, yeah. And that's where, and, and, and I, at the time, didn't realize also the complexity of the issue. The city didn't have jurisdiction over Central Avenue. As a contractor who's had to replace, fix people's roofs, the, some of those businesses that are building, well, buildings on Central, it's damn near impossible to get a lane of 52 shut down or diverted. Now that 52 is no longer going through the city, it is very easy to go talk to the city and make your schedule, put up your cones, pull your permit, and we can now shut down a lane to just put stuff on the roof and redo the storefront. Before, the DOT basically said you had to sacrifice it all. To some lot, some mountain god, that's, they, they basically said, no, we will not give you jurisdiction. We will not do this. And they explained the complexity of, say, oh, one of those big, long, wind-termed parts coming through the city. They're going through that curve there. If you try to shut down half of that lane and that semi couldn't do his thing, wherever that, that piece has to be, you will now be responsible, you, the contractor, or me, would be responsible for the delay that that crane is waiting for that piece somewhere.
So now that that's not a roadblock?
Mm-hmm, literally, literally. Yes, yes.
Thank you, thank you very much. Do you see the central, North Central Corridor and True North now being able to get a little bit more legs?
Yes, yes.
What would that look like? How would that happen?
So I, I picture seven to 10 years. And this is a big picture. This is my big, this is my dream. Seven to 10 years, ones and twosies, little buildings getting rehabbed, one at a time, two at a time, maybe. I, I think the idea of the block idea is not gonna happen. First, you'd have to bring in a developer, and as a construction person, it ain't gonna happen. Converting them into some apartments with shops would be great. Our black community is, they just want their own products in the neighborhood. They're tired of driving back to Chicago. They're tired of driving back to Milwaukee. They just want to buy their own stuff here. And so getting, and there's a small group of black business owners that I'm trying to get together and working with to be like, we can do this. You could start your own storefront. And a lot of these folks may not have like a 10-year business plan or a five-year business plan. So they're gonna be asked, so they're gonna be needing help from banks. They're gonna be needing help from the community to get them, to get their, to get their feet, off their feet essentially, and get moving, and then get going, and then, then they're on their own. But that's my big vision of rehabbing Central completely, from 12th all the way to 32nd. That may mean some of those houses that can't be saved, can't be saved. I, I'm of the mindset of, if, if a building can be saved, save it. If it can't, it's too far gone, sorry. That could tie into even heavily with our H&amp;W building. There's a big eyesore that's like, shit or get off the pot, man. This guy just does not want to move forward. I don't know what his deal is. I've reached out to him, and I don't know if that building can be saved much more. I, I, I think at this point, he needs to present to the city a structural report that says this building is sound. I think the tower front is sound, but clearly where it's fallen down, isn't. And it may not be worth rebuilding it anymore. It may be save the front of the building and, and connect a new building on to it, so. Some of the bigger goals of the neighbors is, the seniors can't, and, and I'm really happy that we were able to do this small program. 4,000 isn't enough, in all honesty, for, to keep some of these seniors in their homes. But it, it's, it's, it's a start. It is a really good start with that new HUD program that we're gonna be partnering with, that we just approved. That gives folks the chance to stay in their homes a little bit longer. And I really like the fact that there are parts of it that basically said, if you can't stay in your home, let's get you programs, and let's, let's help you build a pathway to move out of your home. Because that's, we shouldn't be, be throwing quality funds into something that really isn't a possible fix, so. But I'd, I'd really love to see the development, if, if, but I don't even know if this is possible anymore, because the folks that own Flex Steel, they don't wanna talk to anybody. They, they're keeping their cars really close to their chest. I'd love to see that old land. That could be possibly one of these pocket neighborhoods. What, and what I liked about the idea of this, or even a bunch of side-by-side condos kind of all facing around each other, was, as I got to door knocking two years ago, and I still kinda chuck with some of those neighbors that live across from Holy Trinity up there, where the old, where the, where the old playground was. Those seniors, they've all lived in that neighborhood, but they never knew each other. And they all went to the same church. And all their kids went to the same school. But they never knew each other. They, someone went to Mass at 5:30 and someone went on Sundays, a different side. But they never knew each other. But they all live within like a two-block radius of the neighborhood. And they wanna stay in the neighborhood. And they love how that, that it's one story, they park their car in the place, they, I think they walk a step up into the house. That's it. And they don't have to maintain it. Yes, they're all rentals. And they're not low-income rentals either. They're all at market rate, which is really nice, which is a need that we're, we're, we're needing in the neighborhood and in the city in general. And these folks are just, they're just, they never knew their neighbors before. And it just, it just, I find it so funny. It's like, you never got the time to talk to your neighbor that lived a block down from you? Well, no, I didn't need to. So I knew my neighbors on, on a couple houses down around me, but, so that it's just very, the irony of them finding each other at this stage in their life is, is, is kind of unique and fun. And I just, that's what I'd like to recreate somewhere else in the neighborhood. I just don't know how, sort of leveling a whole block of houses and building this, so.
Well, we planned for 45 minutes. We're probably hitting our mark here. Anything else you wanna, wanna mention before we let you go?
No, no, just hopefully everything goes well in November. I'm looking forward to hopefully another four years and.
Do you know much about your opponent?
Honestly, don't. I, I never ran into him before. And I, when I, when I heard about him, I was like, okay, social media, social, he doesn't have a social page. Okay. And then he finally put one up. I was like, okay, well. Yeah, I've never heard of him. I, I've worked with Gary on some buildings for Geezy over the years. And I, I ran into him at the ribbon cutting down there at, at, at Crescent. And I said to Gary, I said, is that your nephew? Or like a relation? Ah, like a third cousin or something, like, okay. And that's all I had to say. So I was like, okay. But I, I haven't seen the gentleman. I haven't seen Ricky running around. I've, I've only seen him at one event, and that was the parade. Otherwise, I haven't seen him door knocking. I haven't ran into him at all the events I have been running too, because part of, part of campaigning is going to community events.
Well, we appreciate your time.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it as well. Thank you, thank you.